Oh, here, a roll call, my left.
Monica Allers.
Peter Bernhard.
For Shoemaker, go blank.
Marissa Jacobs.
Harlow Vernwald.
Okay, uh, next thing we'll call is the citizen input. Items that are on the, somebody wishes to speak to. Not on any agenda.
Uh, we do have the minutes to, to review first.
Uh, I'm sorry, you didn't hear to approve, I guess. Okay, has everybody looked at the minutes? Has there been any changes, additions, uh, that's? Someone said, right, I just saw, see it on the one end of my pile.
No, huh, so there were some changes that Monica had requested and then, uh, we did print that packet out for you of the minutes with the highlighted section where it was revised based on Monica's comments.
It's been revised. Have you read those? Uh, the only thing that I noticed and I've already staffed is in the minutes that, uh, remind, page four, six, up, um, word paragraph, last word, should have been, uh, C O N S E L, individual, just to, all righty. Case, I think, to citizen input, I guess, when we didn't get any.
We'd need to vote on them.
I'll move for a second.
Second.
A motion, I'm sorry, I'm moving for a motion to approve the minutes.
All right.
With the identified changes.
Second.
Yeah. I wanted to just mention that I was not at the last meeting, so I really don't know exactly what's. I don't know if you want me to vote on the minutes or not.
Good.
Uh, it's up to you if you want to read, I know you watched the, the video, but, um, feel free, if you aren't comfortable voting, we do have a, a quorum here, a majority, anyway.
I just wanted to note for the record that I had been, um, absent from reading.
Yep, thank you.
Anyway, continue. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right, uh, I want to start to.
Uh, we could ask for citizen input one more time.
Yeah, all right, citizen input one more time, third time.
Just double checking.
Okay.
All right.
Used to a larger crowd. All right, um, what would new business here? Business on the docket here is 5.1, pocket number S D R three dash 21, cell D P twenty one two twenty one, twenty one, E L A two twenty one. Oxbow Inc. has requested approval of an application for site development review to allow for the construction of an eleven thousand nine hundred and forty square foot equipment storage warehouse and associated thirty six hundred square foot administrative office building for its new Oxbow headquarters. The application for the applicant, rest sensitive land development permits due to the presence of floodplain, wetlands, and fish and riparian, uh, on, excuse me, corridor on site. The applicant is, also requests a property line adjustment to remove some of the common property lines on site. Site is located just west of the Oregon Meat Company Building addressed as one three one nine five Columbia River, uh, Highway. Northwest of Scappus-Phrynonia Highway and the Columbia River intersection are probably described as Columbia County S A R N A P thirty one zero, excuse me, thirty two zero one dash C O dash zero zero six zero zero, B two zero one C O zero one seven zero zero, B two zero one, uh, C O zero three one zero zero, B two zero one, C O zero two eight hundred, and B three two one zero, uh, excuse me, C zero, C O zero two seven zero one, sorry. Anyway, this format is a quasi judicial and decisions which allow for both verbal and written testimony, which applies to the sensitive lands development. Only written comments are permitted on the limited land use decisions, and that was by five o'clock Wednesday, December the seventh, which applies to the site development review and property line. Okay, read this statement here, there you go.
Yep.
I am calling this public hearing, uh, to order to consider a consolidated application for site development review, like line adjustment and sensitive lands development, it's floodplain and wetlands and river and riparian corridor. Uh, this, uh, procedure for this, uh, training will follow a strict format. Testimony and evidence must address the criteria that apply to the decision as described in the staff report, to the criteria the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Persons may speak only after being recognized by the chair and must come forward to the microphone or be called on by the chair and online participants wishing to speak and state their name and city for the record. Only testimony that is relevant to the application will be considered. Immaterial or repetitious, uh, testimony will not be allowed. Failure to raise and clarify an issue afford all parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the land use board of appeals based on this issue. Planning Commission will conduct this hearing in a quasi judicial capacity for the sensitive land development permit. In other words, like a court trial where the public, uh, where the planning commission serves as finders of fact based on the relevant approval criteria. Verbal testimony during this hearing is allowed for quasi judicial decisions. This is a consolidated hearing and the site development review and property line adjustment application shall be processed as a limited land use decision, which does not take verbal testimony because it's not required, required interpretation or exercise a policy or legal judgment. Therefore, any verbal testimony shall be limited to issues related to the sensitive land development permit approval. There shall be no audience demonstration or conduct that would disrupt the hearing. Does any of the, the planning commissioners wish to declare any ex parte contact or conflict of interest regarding this matter?
Think the only thing maybe Kristi and I were on the, I would have, many border at the same time here, I think it has, and I think it would have.
And I will also say, because I also served on the same board she's talking about, also been involved with them in some other ways such as, pardon, uh, I, doesn't alter any. Uh, does any party wish to challenge any commissioners impartiality or legal capacity to participate? Uh, the order of the hearing will be the staff report, then the applicant's presentation, and the proponents, and the opponents, and rebuttal by the applicant, and a staff response. Thereafter, this hearing will be closed for consideration of separation by the matter, the matter by the commission. This decision, planning commission, of the planning commission can be appealed to city council. That's it, that's the state. Long one, but. Okay, with that, we'll ask for the staff report.
Okay, great.
Sorry.
Well, good evening, thank you commissioners for being here tonight, um, and thank you for your service to the community. So, um, like I usually do, I'll begin by going over the observations at the beginning of the staff report, and then I'll let you know what the relevant approval criteria are and what pages you can find the findings to those criteria within the report. And then lastly, we'll provide staff's recommendation and the conditions of approval. So, beginning on page twenty five of your packet here tonight, under subject site. So, the subject site consists of four tax lots within city limits, uh, which total thirty two acres, and then the applicant also owns, uh, another tax lot, which is seven acres, the former site of the Oregon Meat Company, um, and that site fronts on Highway thirty, but it's located outside of city limits. Construction of the buildings is proposed on just one of the tax lots, that's tax lot six hundred. Extension of utilities to serve the buildings is proposed on tax lot seventeen hundred and twenty seven oh one, and an access way to the buildings is proposed on tax lots thirty one hundred and twenty eight hundred. The subject site is separated from Scappus-Phrynonia Highway by the Crown Zellerbach Trail along its western property line. Tax lot six hundred, seventeen hundred, and thirty one hundred north of Alder Creek are accessed from Highway thirty via, and, uh, via Thor, or I'm sorry, via an access easement across tax lot twenty eight hundred. And then tax lot twenty seven oh one, which is the southernmost tax lot, is accessed from Scappus-Phrynonia Highway via Thornton Drive, which is a private road. The subject site's designated as industrial on the comprehensive plan map. Nearby properties, uh, within the U G B are also designated industrial north of Scappus- Phrynonia Highway and west of Highway thirty, and designated manufactured home south of Scappus-Phrynonia Highway. Adjacent properties to the northwest and south outside the U G B are designated rural residential by Columbia County. This site is zoned light industrial, adjacent zoning includes light industrial manufactured housing residential to the south and southwest, Columbia County Rural Residential R R five to the southwest and west, Columbia County Primary Agriculture P A eighty and light industrial M two to the north, and Columbia County Heavy Industrial M one and M two to the east. The site contains floodway, floodplain, wetlands, fish and riparian corridor as well. Under observations, site development, again, this application is proposing the construction of a new eleven thousand nine hundred and forty square foot one story warehouse and a thirty six hundred square foot office building, and that's with associated site amenities like parking and landscaping. Uh, the, you can see the preliminary plans in exhibit four. The site user, Oxbow Inc., specializes in heavy moving and rigging, and as part of the company's operations, oversized vehicles would be stored and used regularly, um, on this site. Under property line adjustment, the applicant is also requesting approval of, uh, property line adjustment to remove the common property lines between tax lot thirty one hundred and tax lot six hundred, and to remove the property lines within tax lot six hundred, and you can see that on the property line adjustment drawing, which is exhibit five. And the reason for this request in part is, um, again, you probably are aware that there's a cut fill balance in the floodplain, so they needed to make sure that this was all on one site so that they could, um, accomplish their cut fill balance, um, as required by our code, within the same lot. So it would essentially go from four, four parcels down to one. Under right of way, public improvements and utilities, the subject site has access to Highway thirty, again, via an access easement through lot twenty eight hundred. No dedication of right of way or street improvements are required by the application. The applicant was issued a permit to construct a state highway approach by ODOT already, that's attached as exhibit twenty three. The applicant proposes sanitary sewer, domestic water, fire, and firewater connections to existing city utilities, which are located, uh, at the closest point in Scappus-Phrynonia Highway. The applicant will need to obtain an easement from Columbia County since the proposed utility connection, uh, crosses the Crown Zellerbach Trail, which is owned by Columbia County in this location. Under vehicular access and off-street parking, the applicant proposes to pave the existing gravel driveway connecting to Highway thirty. They're proposing two bicycle ra, racks, which would accommodate four bicycles. The Scappus Development Code requires twenty one parking spaces based on these uses. The applicant's proposing twenty three spaces, with one being an ADA spot. The applicant has provided turning diagrams for Oxbow's oversized trucks, that's exhibit four N N. This demonstrates the feasibility of large vehicle circulation and access egress to the site. The oversized vehicles would be stored in the northwestern portion of the site, which is shown on the site plan, exhibit four G. Under transportation analysis, the applicant did submit a transportation analysis letter, and this estimates that the proposed development would generate eight AM peak hour trips, nineteen PM peak hour trips, and a total of seventy two daily trips. The T A L provided a, a safety analysis within a quarter mile of the development, which is required. Crash data, site distance, site lighting, um, excuse me, street lighting and visibility and access and spacing were evaluated. In regard to access spacing, uh, rural areas of state highways with average annual daily traffic of more than five thousand vehicles and a posted speed of fifty five or higher have a spacing standard of thirteen, uh, twenty feet, and that's measured from center to center on the same side of the highway. The spacing from the existing driveway to the next access to the south is, um, slightly less than that at one thousand seventy feet, while spacing to the next access to the north is about three hundred and fifteen feet. However, the site does have an existing, uh, ODOT access permit, and the applicant has already obtained their permit to construct, uh, state highway approach, that's attached as exhibit three, or twenty three. Uh, ODOT doesn't have an issue with this, um, uh, access spacing since, again, it's grandfathered in. The twenty sixteen Transportation System Plan depicts two projects with future roadway alignments, um, through the site. These are projects, uh, D four and D nineteen. We have, uh, an image there on page twenty seven where you can see, um, uh, the, the dashed, uh, green and dashed blue lines. Based on federal and state court rulings, cities can only impose, uh, conditions of approval requiring public improvements if the improvements are proportional to the impact of the development. The T A L does include an analysis of whether dedication of right of way for these projects or construction of the street improvements would be proportional to the estimated transportation impacts from the project. The applicant's transportation engineer, uh, concluded that it would not, uh, be proportional to the impact. Um, city staff and city attorney have reviewed that and concur with that. However, any future land use applications involving this subject site or surrounding sites, again, would have to reevaluate, um, any future projects they're proposing for that proportionality. And that's, again, based on the impact of the proposed new trips. Under landscaping, screening, and street trees, the applicant submitted a landscaping plan, it's attached as exhibit four V. It depicts landscaping and stormwater plantings, uh, throughout the subject site. The applicant proposes utilizing the existing vegetation, privacy fencing, and site boundary landscaping to satisfy the buffering and screening requirements required by chapter seventeen point one hundred point one hundred along the western and northwestern boundary of tax lot six hundred, which staff supports. Additionally, transportation terminals and storage yards require that a five-foot landscape perimeter setbacks around all outdoor parking and that buffering and screening needing S D C seventeen point one hundred point one hundred be provided for storage areas, outside storage areas. So, in addition to utilizing existing natural vegetation, the applicant proposes forty eight trees and a hundred and eleven shrubs along the eastern and northern boundary of tax lot six hundred to meet this requirement. Under lighting, the applicant submitted a site lighting plan attached as exhibit four Z, that depicts the location of exterior lighting throughout the site. Under sensitive lands flooding permit, the proposed development is in the hundred-year floodplain in zone A O. The applicant has provided elevation certificates, uh, preliminary for both buildings, along with a no-rise analysis, which is attached as exhibit eleven. The applicant's no-rise analysis indicates that the proposed development will not impact the hundred-year flood elevations in the site vicinity. The cut and fill are balanced on each individual tax lot as described in the applicant's cut and fill memo. The applicant's narrative indicates that the consultant team has requested a letter of map revision from FEMA to correct the map to eliminate the mapped floodway through the site, since the site's topography does not reveal the presence of a channel in that location. Since FEMA's still evaluating the letter of map revision request, the application must be evaluated based on the existing flood maps, and so that's what we have done here. Uh, you will see, however, on the, um, plan sheets that they have proposed, they, they're showing both the information for the eventual letter of map revision based flood elevations in addition to, uh, the A O zone, which looks at the flood depth number. Um, under both scenarios, it meets our code, um, it more than meets the code, so, um, whenever, whenever that approval comes in, um, we would evaluate the eventual development based on the current maps in place at the time. Again, it would work with either, um, we, we feel comfortable with that. Columbia County has requested a condition of approval stating that any substantial development proposed on tax lot twenty eight hundred would be required to obtain a floodplain development permit from Columbia County Land Development Services. Again, that's because that's the parcel that's located outside city limits. Under sensitive lands wetlands permit, so our local wetlands inventory map does identify wetlands, uh, near Alder Creek. The applicant's consultant team performs site-specific wetland investigations, they delineated three wetlands, two creeks, and two ditches within tax lot six hundred, thirty one hundred, and seventeen hundred. Additionally, tax lot twenty seven oh one contains a wetland which was delineated in two thousand sixteen and concurred with by D S L in two thousand sixteen. Underground utilities are proposed to extend along the western edge of that fifty-foot buffer. The applicants are required by the recommended conditions of approval to update this delineation prior to the issuance of building permits. Tax lot twenty eight hundred, again, outside of city limits, was delineated, they, there were found to be five wetlands, one ditch, and one waterway. They got, the applicant is proposing excavation and grading within a wetland buffer area, and that's shown on exhibit four. That material that they cut would be used on-site to increase the elevation of the outside storage area and buildings, um, and that can be seen on exhibit four G and in exhibit six. Oregon Department of State Lands reviewed the applicant's proposal to concur with the wetland delineations and concluded that the project impact, avoids impacts to on-site wetlands and/or waters. Uh, that information can be found in exhibit twenty four. Under sensitive lands, fish and riparian corridor permit, the local wetland, or the local riparian inventory and wetland delineations confirm that north Scappus Creek runs along the northern portion of tax lot six hundred, and Alder Creek runs through tax lot seventeen hundred and tax lot twenty eight hundred. The applicant proposes to bore under Alder Creek for utility connections to public water and sanitary sewer mains in Scappus-Phrynonia Highway, and you can see that on the utility plan, exhibit four L. The applicant has provided correspondence from O D F W, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, confirming that the proposed development will not have a harmful impact on fish and wildlife nor the riparian corridor, and that is attached as exhibit eighteen. Under private, private and public agencies, uh, all required noticing has been met for this application. We did not receive any comments and opposition from these agencies, the agency comments are attached as exhibits twenty four through thirty four, and then any of the issues that are relevant to the planning commission haven't included in the recommended conditions of approval. The, uh, again, the Department of State Lands, uh, reviewed the application and stated that the application avoids impacts to on-site wetlands and waters. The Columbia Soil and Water Conservation District did not have a comment on the project. And then we did not receive any public comments in relation to this application, um, after the staff report was released and even up until yesterday, so, no public comments. Okay. So, uh, in relation to the criteria, I'll read through this and where you can find the findings. So, chapter seventeen point oh one, which is introductions, uh, findings are on page thirty. Chapter seventeen point seven oh, light industrial, findings are on pages thirty through thirty one. Chapter seventeen point eight four, sensitive lands flooding, findings are on pages thirty one through thirty nine. Chapter seventeen point eight five, sensitive lands wetlands, findings are on pages thirty nine through forty four. Chapter seventeen point eight nine, sensitive lands, fish and riparian corridor are on pages forty four through forty eight. Chapter seventeen point nine oh, environmental performance standards are found on pages forty eight through forty nine. Chapter seventeen point one hundred, landscaping, screening, and fencing, findings are on pages forty nine through fifty four. Chapter seventeen point one oh four, street trees, findings are on page fifty four. Chapter seventeen point one oh six, off-street parking and loading requirements, findings are on pages fifty four through sixty. Chapter seventeen point one two oh, site development review, findings are on pages sixty through sixty four. Chapter seventeen point one five two, land division, property line adjustments, findings are on pages sixty five through sixty six. Chapter seventeen point one five four, street and utility improvement standards, findings are on pages sixty six through seventy three. Quasi judicial decision making, chapter seventeen point one six two, uh, findings are on page seventy three, and chapter seventeen point one six four, uh, limited land use decision making, findings are on page seventy four. So if you want to turn to page seventy four. So, based on the findings of fact and the materials submitted by the applicant, staff recommends that the planning commission approve this application, and subject to, uh, the conditions of approval, leave, there are forty two conditions. The applicant has reviewed the conditions, um, and are good with those, of course, you can hear from them on that, but that concludes my staff report presentation at this time. I'm happy to answer questions, or you could move on to the applicant's presentation.
I have a whole bunch of questions, but I don't know if those, those come after the applicant's presentation?
Some of the questions.
Seems like it would be better after the applicant's presentation.
And Bill, can you talk a little bit and more into the mic?
Let's see here. So, over here, closer to. This'll be a lesson for the applicants to speak into the mic. Okay, uh, the applicant, so who's gonna come forward? Please introduce yourself and where you're from. Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Mr. Blank?
A little louder, maybe.
Little louder, okay. My name's Keith Settle. I'm the owner of the property and also Oxbow Incorporated. I'm here on behalf of Oxbow, so I appreciate the time to talk to you tonight, commissioners, and I'm glad to see Mary Leck Backus in the room as well. First off, I want to say you have a great staff. Lori and Chris have we've worked on this for almost five years now. Do you realize that?
Not with us, but in the back.
Well, I mean, from the first time I came in your office and said, this is the only place our business can be, can we make this work? So I will answer any questions you have, but I'm probably going to speak generally more to the process a little bit. Because we do own, we also not only property that at the Oregon meet, but we bought the cinnamon tree property as well. So we own its entire forty acres there, and as far as I'm concerned, it's a key piece of what happens to Scapoose in the future because we're kind of pinned to the south, and this is the gateway to the north. Whatever we do here is going to leave a footprint, and we want to do it the right way. And this will probably be the first of many times I get to be in front of you because there this is the first step of many of what we're trying to do. But a little history on the company, we started this company in Columbia County in nineteen ninety three, and we've been in several different locations. And for those of you that don't know what we do, we move transformers and enormous equipment all over the United States. It's not just here in Columbia County or in Oregon. Matter of fact, very small amount of our business comes from here. But when we grew and we needed more property, there was only one place that we could possibly go. We kind of looked at the airport property, but the trailers we move are three hundred feet long, so the radiuses of the corners to go to Scapoose and gravel, we can't get back there. So this was really the only place that we could go and still stay in Columbia County, at least on this side of town. So and I was born and raised here. I was born, I tell people I was born at the DMV because it used to be the hospital. And as far as I can remember, nothing's happened with that property over there since our parents quit dancing at the cinnamon tree in the was that the early to mid seventies for anybody that's from around here, you know? So that property's just sat there and looked exactly the same, and so we really want to do something special with it. But that being said, I just kind of want to make sure everybody understands the process that we had to go through to get there. I think you have two hundred and fifty six pages in front of you. And once again, this is nothing against Lori and Chris. They've been wonderful guiding me through this process. But this is more of a thought, and maybe I'm talking to Mayor Backus, but if we don't make this process a little bit easier for business owners, you're not going to have any new businesses here. If I wasn't from here. If I wasn't from here, we wouldn't have done this. It's not the it's very difficult to try to work here, and we knew it was going to be a difficult piece of property. There's no doubt about it, but. You can do the math, but I have more than a thousand dollars per page invested into this at this point. And that's money that could have been spent developing the property. It could have been put into the forty employees that work here, and we expect it to be difficult, but I just think it's I don't know if from behind your chairs, if you guys realize, and I don't know that you guys have any control over the process because I think we're actually dealing with state mandates and what we're having to deal with. But if we as a group don't push back on this stuff. Companies like us can't do. I couldn't start today. There's no way I could start today and do what we've done. So like I said, I'm probably talking more broad on it, but. It's been a tough process. Andrew's guided me through it. Like I said, this is just the first step, and I guess I'll answer any questions, but I think I couldn't speak more eloquently than the two hundred and fifty six pages of information you all have. I hope you all read it because I actually didn't read all of it because. I just kept seeing the conditions coming. Okay, we got to do this, we got to do this, but thank you know, finally we get to turn dirt after five years of buying, you know, after we bought this. So it's been a tough road for us. We really want to make the property better and keep employing the forty people that we employ here. But I just hope that we can also do something with the rest of the property to make it. Maybe we can get through these steps to where if somebody else wants to start a business, we've got a place for them, you know? There's just not, there's not that many opportunities in this county or this state. So I know we need regulations to protect our ground and to protect our environment, but we've got to remember we live here too. There's people that live here, and if we don't start counting for the people, we're not going to have any left here. That's my soapbox statement, so. Is there any questions anybody has of me?
Anybody have any questions of the? This time? Bill? Hey. Do you have a couple of questions? The entrance to this is just off the highway, which is really outside the city. And the application shows you've done a lot of work on how to design that, and it's going to be widened, as I understand where it's at now. The three hundred long pieces of equipment assess getting into that highway. Is this designed to accommodate that? Will there be some type of traffic control when you have this large equipment going on to the highway?
So. Kind of a few questions there, so let me walk through it. So right now, our business has been for the last fifteen years at the corner of Gilmore Road and Highway thirty, so those same trailers have been coming out of that, which is right on the corner. They're very maneuverable. That being said, when you say we're widening the access, it is actually a thirty five foot wide access there. It's just never been used to its full capacity. I had to make sure of that before we bought the property. And whenever we move those trailers, we have traffic control. I guess that's the easy answer. Every time we move anything that's oversized, which is anything more than eight feet wide and fifty three feet long total, we have to have a permit, so we have to have ODOT permission for everything we do. They regulate whether how many traffic control people we have, whether we have police escorts. It's very common for us to have to do that, so. But the thirty five feet wide, yes, it we're going from a five lane road to basically what in essence is a three lane road when we go thirty five feet wide. These trailers are designed to go from two lane road, ninety degree corner to another two lane road. So yes, we can make that corner.
And the weight of this equipment, some which you're going to be doing, will the road be able to withstand that should there be any flooding or whatever they talk?
So the reason that the trailers are three hundred feet long is so it spreads the load. So we are actually, when you see all the dump trucks that come out of Scapoose Sand and Gravel that are loaded to a hundred and five thousand pounds, they'll actually have more weight per tire on their trailers than we do. And once again, everything's engineered and permitted on every road that we go on before we go out there. We have our own engineers that turn this in, but that's the reason the trailers are so long and wide is so we can take a three hundred thousand pound transformer that you have sitting in your substation here, right over here by Pizza Vendor, and we can put it legally on the road. So that's what these trailers are designed for.
Been here since ninety three. But since ninety eight, is there a time of day that usually do that because I've never seen.
We're pretty, we're pretty, we're pretty sneaky with that stuff, but. Yeah, most of the time we do have curfew restrictions, so you won't see us. It depends on the size of trailer as well. And some of these trailers, like I say, they're three hundred feet long, but when they're empty, we'll break them in half, so they'll be they're still huge, they're a hundred and fifty feet long, and we'll put them together at the site. But the our permits are usually, well, not usually, they always have hours of restriction. So a lot of times, if they're huge, it's at nighttime, so you guys will go to bed at night and you'll come back in the morning, it'll be a huge trailer sitting in the driveway, and everybody wonders how we got it down there. And for those of you who've been here for a while, we used to move houses a lot more than we do now, and that was the way it was. You guys would come back on a Monday morning and there'd be three houses sitting on our property because on Sunday night at two in the morning, we brought them out of Portland and set them down there as as a temporary storage area. So off hours. And once again, DOT controls that we have to ask permission for everything that's oversized. They'll tell us what time, when we can go, how many escorts we need to have. And like I said, sometimes they even require police. Oregon doesn't so much on the police escorts what other states are.
Yeah, so. Sorry. One follow up, most of those seventy two. Just employees.
It absolutely, it's actually employees on the slow time because when we're busy, our employees are all over the country. So that is every single employee we have, if they came to the shop every day and left every day and went to lunch and came back, that's how they count. I mean, it's worst case scenario on the round trips, but it's the same number that have been coming off Gilmore Road for the last fifteen years as well. So we're actually excited to come on to Highway thirty on a straight stretch because that little curve right there at Gilmore Road, we've never had accident there, but we've had several upside down vehicles in our shop, and one was in the creek, you know? So it's amazing how that little corner right there distracts people. So we're excited to have vision both directions. It's a much better location for us safety wise.
This is a different subject, but. Has the area that you're excavating, the ninety three hundred eight cubic yards, is that shown on the plans yet, or has that been decided? Or how big the area will be, like two acres, three feet deep or what?
It is on the plans. And once again, when we I. This is a site design review, so when we go to building permit, it'll be much more specific, but I believe that we've pretty much crossed all the Ts and dotted the Is for building permit should be, we should be right there. So but there it's it's normal in any construction to create a depression to to build up, right? I mean, that's how we control flooding now. I believe it, you might speak to where it is, but I think it's back to the west a little bit more as well.
Yeah, I'm Andrew Nini with Lower Columbia Engineering, by the way, and I'll just briefly say we worked with Keith on the engineering for his original site there on the just north of Gilmore Road. So yeah, we've been working with Keith for a while, and I'll just say very briefly, this guy has been willing to, you know, hire whatever consultants have been required, have whatever study on the property done that has been asked. And in my opinion, he's been one of those landowners that's been a real steward of the property and the process. And you know, it's been pretty daunting. It's a really challenging piece of property, multiple tax lots there that all bring different challenges, a mix of tax lots that are in the city and the county. And of course, as y'all know, you have a very thorough staff that does a very good job making sure all of the different boxes are checked. And so you've got a as thorough of packet in front of you, I will say, as I have ever seen in my twenty five year career. Now to your question about the cut and fill, as I believe you know, and Lori mentioned, the city requires a balanced cut and fill for each tax lot. And because of the location in the floodplain, it's required to elevate the building up to a certain elevation that's safely above the floodplain. So the fill that's required to get us to that elevation has to be balanced on that specific tax lot. So we are proposing a cut on the western end of the property there that's kind of outside of the footprint that's being improved really for the purpose of balancing that cut and fill. So we have had geotechnical exploration done. We've done a lot of poking and prodding ourselves to really understand what all the ramifications are of meeting those requirements, and that is all addressed in the forty some pages of plans that are sitting before you.
It's and you can see specifically in exhibit sheet D ten. Seventy four of your packet shows where they're cutting. Cross section.
What I was noticing was in exhibit seventeen that it was being addressed, cutting that amount and in that area could create a wetland. So my question kind of to that is you're creating a new wetland. Does the wetland buffer so move fifty feet around that? New wetland?
Yes, I wouldn't necessarily say we're creating a wetland. We are working adjacent to the wetland there. You know, it's interesting, the state doesn't regulate creating wetlands, so it's in the future that 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 could end up being a wetland, and then it would be the applicable regulations, I would say, would apply to it if it does become a wetland in the future. The current wetlands are all delineated and we're, you know, making a point to comply with all of the applicable regulations associated with those.
I'm actually glad you brought the wetlands because I kind of wanted to speak to that a little bit, and I'm sure you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think a wetland actually becomes a wetland until it's been there for five years. Is that right? If you create it? Okay. Okay. One of the things I wanted to point out is it. It's daunting listening to Lori talk about all the wetlands and riparian and the Alder Creek. All that stuff was made by the humans that had the property before me. It's not naturally occurring there. That Alder Creek was dug in by the previous property owners to drain the ditch on the other side, and it's right down the property line. It's but it got considered a fish bearing stream, and I don't know how fish could ever go up that, but it's not my job to to do that. But the wetlands were created, I mean, let's be honest, most of them were created by Highway thirty building up a hump in the middle so the water can't drain. But the property in the back where this where we're building was filled at one point, and the people that filled it dug in a wetland that if you look back, Google Maps is pretty amazing. It goes back to the fifties, and that wetland wasn't there. It was dug in, and they took fill from right next to Crown Zellerback Trail and built up the other part of it. And then the floodway was it. It was an illegal fill by the property owner before us, and I actually went to FEMA before I bought the property, and I said, okay, your map says this is a floodway. It's not a floodway anymore because it got filled. It wasn't by us, and I said, do you want me to put the floodway back, or do you want me to make it match your map? You know, or do you want to do you want us, do we need to redo the map, or we need to make the land match what your map shows because it's not correct? There's, you know, because the floodway goes right through the edge of the storage units behind Grumpy's towing, and you can tell it's not a flood. If you look over there, there's three feet of rock there. And so in essence, I can sit in front of you today and say, I think I'm the first person that's asked for permission to do anything on the property. Everything else has just happened. Is that a fair statement? I mean, because in we're taking what was a manmade mess and trying to clean it up to make something good out of it. And. We just want to, I want to save some money so I can put up a nice hedge and have an entrance. And if you go buy our property on Gilmore, we actually sold it to help pay for this. It didn't happen in the order I wanted it to, but that used to be just an oak tree and swamp and a there were some couple cows there, and now it's a functional light industrial property with a really nice house on the back. And in my opinion, it looks very clean and neat. It's my opinion, it's one of the neatest properties on Highway thirty, and we plan to do the same thing on this other property. And our goal is to to work with the wetlands as much as we can. We may end up mitigating some of them, but that's a whole nother issue. We're trying to get our shop in so we can operate our business, and then, like I said, this is step one of several. But our goal is to take the mess that the humans before us created on the property and try to make it right and try to make work within the natural confines of the property. But the people that did it before without permission, there's another thousand pages of rules now to fix it. So it's almost harder, you know, it's way harder to fix it than it was for the people that made the mess in the first place. So I mean, I probably go into much in depth on it, but we're trying to fix a problem there, and every wetland that we touch, or if we do, will all be within the confines of the laws with DSL's ruling, and we we can actually recreate wetlands and mitigate them to the back of the site because, you know, for if, but that's a whole nother process. So right now, it's one of the reasons it made this so difficult is we had to put in the development in such a way where the shop, office, all the parking we have right now, the turnaround, doesn't affect any of the things we're talking about because I can't afford to go do all the wetland mitigation. It's kind of a catch twenty two. We went to DSL and said, hey, we want to gravel this and put in a building, and they said, well, we can't just give you carte blanche to gravel this for development. We need to actually have a plan to develop it. So we end up having to ask, it's, I don't know, it's, it's, it's a cart and a horse type thing, right? So I'm putting this in knowing that we need more property than what's there, but it's the best we can do right now, and we will fit within what's there. But our ultimate goal is to work with DSL to continue to develop, mitigate and make it a more usable piece of property.
One thing I'll just briefly say to elaborate a little bit on the history of the site because it I believe it is relevant, as Keith mentioned, it's heavily modified. And the picture's not completely clear, but when we first got involved in looking at this site with Keith, it was described as a site with a previous illegal fill on it. Well, when we started looking into it, there actually had been a fill permit with the county originally. It was basically like a cocktail napkin sketch of, hey, this is where we're putting material that was so vague, and it was renewed multiple times to where I wouldn't necessarily say it was an illegal fill. It was a very poorly regulated process. And so, you know, while we all complain and cuss about the the process we're having to go through here, you know, there's there's some help of giving the city a pat on the back. There's some value, of course, because we're cleaning up a lot of what's the result of a pretty sloppy previous.
And I think one other thing to mention. And I think one other thing to mention is that not only cleaning up this property is it better for the property. But in a weird way, it's helping the city of Scappus as well, because they annex property that had problems on it. And this cleans it up, because the the problems were created when it was in the county. And by us doing this, it, I guess, I guess just the the city annexed property that already had existing problems and it just fixes it for everybody. And the gentleman I talked to from FEMA says, he goes, I don't care if you make it match the map or you change the ma- you know, which way you want to go. He goes, I just need you to get it done. And I wish he was still there, because it's supposed to be a ninety day approval and we're on year three of that right now. So um, we're still waiting on that. That's one of the things that's held this up, because we basically had to give you almost two proposals all the way through this. It was like, okay, well, if the the Lomer map goes through, this is what our plan is. If it doesn't go through, this is what our plan is. So then we had to merge them together and go, this one will work no matter what and we'll just let the chips fall later, because I gotta get more space for my company right now. So um, so anyways, that's where we're at. So that's it's just been a very, very difficult process. I think I've probably said that way too many times, but I don't know if I can say it enough.
Yeah, it was a question I was gonna be talking about a little bit too, is that letter of map revision. It's the word statuses on that right now. I know you can't move forward without it, right?
Oh, no, we can't. This this can move forward exactly like it is. And it it doesn't, we we put in elevations whether, because it just changes the floodplain a little bit is what it does. And our elevations sort of get works both ways, no matter which way it is. We had to put the building higher to make sure it fit both blood fu- floodplain elevations. But um, I think it was about four months ago, I finally called Lori and I said, Lori, we have to go without the Lomer, because I'm actually in control of that. I can say, forget it, cancel the whole process. I don't want to do that, because we got three years into it and it needs to be done. So I just said, let's just do it this way, but then we agreed to just, let's just make it work both ways. And so we're good either way.
Um, the elevation be quite high in a couple buildings. There's what, four and a half feet? The other ones a little bit different, lower than that. The warehouse that you mentioned, what's stored in the warehouse?
It's mostly equipment and tools, but um. Our company actually got started mitigating the floods in Vernonia after they happened in ninety-six. That's where Oxbow actually started, was elevating homes after the floods. So I'm pretty astute with the FEMA plans and what you have to do. And it's a whole different elevation certificate for a commercial building that's built with metal rather than a residential structure that's wood. Um, residential, you have to be, everything has to be oh more than a foot above your ductwork, everything. And um, I I believe we have the finished floor of the buildings higher than the floodplain. But I think that's even in excess, because I don't know that that necessarily has to be that way, as long as we're floodproofed below the floodplain, which is a metal building and concrete, which is what we have.
None of the uh. Equipment that you have, the moving equipment is stored inside that warehouse then?
None, the big trailers are not. No, it's mostly smaller equipment.
All outdoors.
Yes, and everything's movable, so I mean.
There's no ramp or elevated uh area to enter the building.
It might have a slight grade to get to it, because it does sit a little bit above, but it's it's not like we're going up a, you know, a a ten percent grade for ten feet to get up there. So our our, those trailers wouldn't make that kind of a grade, so.
I was wondering.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons that volume is as high as it is, is because not only are you jacking up the print of the building, but of course, that feathering in the grades in the surrounding areas to accommodate the parking. And and to keep that area maneuverable for his truck. So, you know, that's actually probably the majority of that fill that we're having to balance out with that cut is to really make the site look natural when it's done. And the buildings are all elevated. Like Keith mentioned, you have the option of floodproofing, anything that's not elevated, the one foot above the base flood ele- base flood elevation. Um, or floodproofing, anything that is not elevated, but we are elevating the, all the utilities, HVAC. Floor elevations, everything.
We we don't want to run over there in a heavy rain and have to take the stuff out of the building. I just, I'd rather build it up now.
There was one thing about the the buffer and restoring that buffer, sounds like it's part of the project that needs to be done. And we have indicated, uh, we have it between August the first and January the thirty-first. However, I think somewhere in my red. Put it down somewhere. That it's slightly different dates by. Other agencies.
Yeah, one was.
July the fifteenth through September the fifteenth, and I'm just wondering. Why we, uh, or maybe that's something I should ask staff, but are we not including those dates as opposed to other dates?
I think, and Andrew can speak to this too, but I think it was just a recommendation from ODFW from what I read. But when we go to actually get the permit, it will specify when we can work there and we'll have to follow that. I think this is kind of a condition to make sure we're following their rules is really what this boils down to. Um, I'm hopeful that it's July fifteenth. I'd like, you know.
Prior the better.
Exa- absolutely. You know, pretty much everything comes to halt here about October fifteenth, you know, so. Um, but any, you know, obviously we have to follow whatever rules are there and and that's definitely what we'll do.
Oh, is there any other questions?
I have one about the gravel, the new gravel, the storage area, the heavy equipment storage area.
There's already gravel based there, but we will, it needs more. And once again, whoever did it didn't really do it correctly. It was basically what's there, um, if anybody remembers that Angel Corey there by Savvy Island, they, for years, they couldn't wash their rocks, so they gave away reject. And every truck for probably ten years would bring home a load of reject, which is just three quarter minus gravel with dirt mixed in it. And that's ninety percent of what is, was used on that property. So it's actually really good fill, but they didn't, um, it's not graded quite the right way, so there are some soft spots. So to answer your question, there there will be some new gravel, but we're not gonna bring in anymore than we need to, because everything we bring in, we have to cut to make up for.
Okay, um, that area seems to come really close to the property line where the street, the North Scappus Creek is. I didn't see the riparian corridor shown, so it was hard for me to hear out that. Coaching on the riparian corridor, the north, where the most point.
We will not be within fifty feet of anything over there. We'll make sure of that. And um, our plans will show all that when we go to the building permit phase. And that'll be something that when we pull our excavation permit, that'll be inspected by either city inspectors or county, that'll be city at that point. But um, so we'll be, it'll be verified by city staff at some level, not only that the plans are correct, but that we're actually following the plans. It's like, just like a building inspection.
Yeah, and this will also trigger a DEQ twelve hundred C erosion and settlement control permit. That's a very heavily regulated process that'll monitor the protection of those areas with regard to runoff. And uh, require regular inspections and it'll be closely monitored.
During construction.
Correct, yeah.
I think you can see by all of the entities that we have to appease their rulings, that we don't expect to sneak anything by anybody at this space. Either we're right on the front of the highway, so I expect, I actually want to meet all these people that have all these regulations, so we can make sure we're on the same page, so.
No, between you and Monica, you both pretty much covered everything I had in my head, so thank you.
One other question then, uh, back to the uh entryway, the driveway. It's outside the city, so we can't, we really, it's not applicable to us from some of the findings on the buffering and all that stuff. But does that fall in the preview of the county then? Because it's inside the county, do you have to get county permission for anything you do outside of that? I mean, we may not have any say over it, but just curious to know.
I I can speak to that a little bit. Um, so the county did submit, so we obviously did send this to them for their comment. Um, they did comment back that if um, that they may need a floodplain development permit on that tax lot twenty-eight hundred. If they're proposing any work that would trigger it. Um, just the paving of the existing um driveway through there would not necessarily trigger any permit require requirement from the county. And then they've already received their ODOT permit to construct um essentially that paved entrance into their site. So those, between those two entities, um, that's that's being covered.
Additional.
No.
Okay, and and just for the record, that Lori and Chris have been dumped with the county's responsibilities too, because anytime I ask them, they go, well. It's it's absolutely, they go, it's inside the urban growth boundary, so let's make sure the city likes what you're doing. So it it's, and eventually that piece of property, I will be back here to ask you to annex that at some point. It is part of a bigger piece. So the road and driveway going in, it, I mean, we're asking for the minimum right now to meet the city's requirements, but it is with the thought that that will be in access to the. We're gonna do something with the Oregon meat property. We'll do some different things, but this is just the first step of what we're hoping is a a great, great development that adds to the community.
Yeah, for what it's worth, with regard to that uh access point onto the highway, our initial discussions, we obviously work with ODOT access. Permitting personnel all the time. And when we described what we were doing, the level of improvements, which is basically modern improvements to that uh access point, paving the driveway, they basically said it's an existing access. Uh, we won't require a permit for that. And, you know, given the thorough nature of the city staff, that they weren't seeming completely satisfied, so we actually kind of talked ODOT into, hey, how about you just accept the permit application for the improvements? So that we can say we've got one and we've checked that box and actually have a permit from ODOT for the improvements that we're proposing, so.
But it seems like so far the city, the staff is doing a pretty good job making conditions of approval, taking care of the unchecked boxes, so.
Pretty thorough, yes.
All right, well, I guess if there's no other questions, uh, we'll ask if there's any other proponents. Opponents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did not receive any um request, speaker request forms, so.
Okay, was any more questions of staff then, or?
I have a couple for staff. Regarding the gravel storage area, is is, are there any requirements for mitigating any chemicals that might leak from the vehicles and equipment? The gravel, I mean, if it was paved, then obviously that would be treated stormwater, but since it's gravel.
It doesn't really address that, so. I'd say no. Um, I will add though, that when you do a previous type of section, that per like a previous pavement or a previous concrete is considered to be treatment. So there's some biological breakdown of constituents that happen. Those are rock sections. So it, there, even though there's not a stated water quality uh facility that's associated with that, you still get a level of treatment. It's it's a, it still gets biological treatment. BY, not really regulated.
Then just one other thing, I noticed that um the swale C is at forty-eight feet of elevation. And I was just like, that's maybe like ten inches above the floodway. So I was just wondering if that particular swell was elevated high enough to name hundred year storm or fifty-five or arm it is.
Uh, from there, which which one is C?
Um, it's the one like right next to the.
Entry.
Driveway.
The driveway.
Right by the county property.
I I want to, I think that's an existing uh ditch drainage.
Not the ditch, so there's a ditch and then there's a little.
Oh, oh, I know.
Whale.
What was your question related?
Just if it's high enough to retain the water. Without. When it, when the, during the floodway situation, retaining water or if it's flood.
You know, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I'm. I I would. As far as the grading, I don't, I don't know.
I mean, we, that would be reviewed to make sure it meets our standard as part of construction permitting.
Yeah, some of the fine grading on the plan to show um, you know, the contour data related to the pond. There like the inverse of the uh piped connections, for instance, between ponds A and B, we don't have to add and things like that. But we're um, those those kinds of details. I'd have, I'd have to, I I can't give you an answer right off the top of my head, but sure, we can.
Sure, thank you.
Certainly have that uh, you know, we'll, we'll certainly have that box checked when we get the final storm report and grading design.
Would you um be able to comment on how this land, if this land is similar to the land um on the Buxton property? In terms of the same floodplain, wetlands, similar in?
I mean, there are wetlands, so there's a similarity. There's fishing creek uh for fish um, uh riparian area. The floodplain is a different floodplain zone. This is AO, whereas the Buxton is AE. AO has a flood depth number on the floodplain maps, and so you have to elevate at least one foot above whatever that depth is. Here it's one foot of depth. Again, because it's an industrial building, they could choose to just um waterproof below that um flood depth number instead of raising the building. Obviously for their, what they're trying to do, they they want to raise the property. But as far as that, I don't know, you know, it's not um. This property has been used over the years quite a bit. It's been filled, it's got, as as um Keith mentioned, has has had gravel placed on it, has had fill placed on it throughout the years. So I'd say it's been more heavily used than the other property. I I would say, yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
Would a, uh, can you explain um, as the applicant has mentioned, this is one step in many. Um, so if we were to approve with the conditions of approval, um, what, what are the additional steps before they would be able to break ground?
Um, so one of the things that they need to do is they need to um complete their property line adjustments and get those new deeds recorded. So it shows it as one lot and that's so they can meet their cut fill balance. Um, and then there, each condition will say kind of when it comes into play, like this is required for final occupancy. Or this is required prior to any permits being issued. And so they would need to go through and meet all of the conditions that are required prior to being issued their grading permit or construction permit. But as far as their larger grand plans for the entire site, um, I I don't know exactly um all the things that they have planned. Obviously, an annexation would come back to planning commission first for a recommendation to council. Council would make the final decision. Um, and, you know, any kind of new buildings they're constructing, if it triggers a major modification to existing approved plans, that would come back to the planning commission. There are some changes that can be done um just at a staff approved level. I don't know if you had anything more specific you were trying.
Wanted to see if, okay, I mean, I understand how the conditions of approval, they have to go through, but if there was something beyond that.
Well, they'll, they'll submit.
Yeah.
They'll submit all their construction documents for engineering and building review. Thing permits. Um, they'll have to. Fire department for those of those, those elements. So they'll be, and and through the county, obviously, and then and a little bit of ODOT, which they already have. So there'll be all of those bit documents. So what you see here, this is, you know, the land use plans or general depiction of the project um that don't have all of the engineering details associated with them. They're more to show compliance with the code. All of the engineering elements be incorporated into these plans. And those will be submitted to me, the building official, the county. We'll review those and we'll issue, we'll issue permits. I'll issue a grading permit.
So long as it all complies with constraints of how the land is being utilized.
Right.
Exactly, there is a.
Grading will need to match essentially, the elements of the grading and fills will have to match. That's why there's some detail, that's those things, the cuts and fills, that those will have to match more or less. And, you know, the, the layout, all of, all of the elements you see here will patch what we.
The other thing too, there was a, they do need to acquire an easement from Columbia County to cross underneath with the utilities through that Crown Street Trail property. And they've been in contact with the county already and know what that process needs to, you know, would look like, so.
No, the city will be monitoring the progress of what each stage that they're at, any.
That's right, yep.
Question for you then would be if we did approve this, say this evening, and they were allowed to start the process. Is it possible then they could start their construction as hopefully in the summer months or whatever it might be?
As soon as their plans are ready and everything, you know, according to, they do have some work windows. There's in-water work windows that they have to abide by, even though they're not going to be working in the water, they're going underneath. But still, um, there's, um, there's going to be certain dates they need to hit for certain parts of the project. But yes, it's absolutely conceivable that they could have everything in place and, and ready to go by then.
For them, this is their state headquarters, national headquarters, international headquarters.
So the land, the land use approval is, is good for one year?
It's good for one year, and then they can request a one-year extension if they need to. But really, so long as we've issued a permit, they don't have to be done in a year, they need to pull their permit within a year.
They essentially have two years to get an application in for engineering approval and building approval, those kinds of things. And then they can work away at their pace.
And everything that we have here is based on the hundred year floodplain.
Yep.
Above that, still should be okay, though, because they're really raising that up quite high. If someone remember from any condition.
That's correct, they had to do the no rise analysis as well, just, that's what our code requires.
And then it's sort of misleading, but some of the elements that you see on this plan, like the floodway, as Keith pointed out, it's not really applicable because it doesn't.
It's been filled.
There, but the site's been elevated well above what that happens to be, and so it's just a line on a map. They're not, they don't often match what's in the field, they're somewhat off. So detailed survey shows that, in this case, it's really obvious, but, so those kinds of things will be extinguished.
Good part of this too is the permitting process, things that have to be done, wildlife, et cetera, and things like that.
Correct, yes.
They have to be checked off, make sure before they touch the ground that I don't affect any of that.
That's right, additionally, all the recommendations from ODFW were placed into the conditions, conditions of approval, which, which we would then make sure that those are being met.
Okay, right, more questions? In case, I guess we can go ahead and close this part of the hearing and go into discussion by staff. Guess this is the way they do it, okay, we're close, right. Go on, Doc.
Have a couple, I, everything is so thorough, report and staff has done a fantastic job. And I've had you guys are patient to go through all this. Do know that you don't have the authority to do a lot of the different things, it depends a lot on state laws and laws and county laws. So I know you've experienced it, so state your patience, not an easy thing. That better than anyone right now, so.
You could from a former mayor.
Yeah, I'm speaking as a former county commissioner, difficult it is to try to put that together, so. Anyway, I just thought, and your staff just. Just about any question I had has been answered, this hundred and fifty-six pages or whatever, anyway.
I know who read it.
I've lost, I've lost, I've lost. Anyway, I, I think they, the questions that I've had have been answered.
For you?
So I have a question and maybe staff would, might want to respond as well, but I like to look at things from a holistic perspective of our area. And given that there is a current development under consideration within a floodplain with council, this land itself is also within floodplain, has wetlands. Question I raise is, given that one is pending, similar land, would this decision be setting a precedent for development within our sensitive lands area within our city?
I can speak to that.
So, or should we be concerned?
Not the same.
They're not staying, not really. I'll let, what do you say?
I, I would love to hear my, my colleagues speak.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, I just don't think it's the same thing, you're looking at geography is so different, both areas. Don't think you can compare them, they're not identical anyway, other than the fact that they impact, impact flooding possibilities, which I'm concerned about, I live in that area, I'm concerned about. But as far as, I, I don't see where decisions should impact the other.
Secondly, if you're in that area over there, you're seeing the flooding all the time, here you're not.
Every year, been there forty years. Anyway.
The applicants aren't responsible for what FEMA decides.
Sure.
I think the point is, but we're moving.
So I just want to say.
This doesn't go from here to.
Correct.
Can't be appealed to the city.
You mean to the council?
Council.
Correct, yeah, no, this is a planning commission decision. But to respond to your question, that is why we have a no rise requirement in, in the city. Our development code states that you can develop in the floodplain if you meet our codes. And you, you can impact wetland buffers if you meet our code. And you can impact Fish and Right Parian Corridor if you meet our code. So to state that, you know, should we be impacting or allowing, you know, development? Our code already gives that allowance if you meet the criteria. So, so we haven't, you know, there's, there's no way, there's no way to deny something. If our code spells out how to, how to have it approved and someone is meeting all of those criteria, then there would be no reason to, to deny. And so while I understand the desire to have a holistic view on these things, that comes at the time when you are changing your code, updating your code, where it's a legislative decision and you're looking at changing policies for things like that. But for an application that has been submitted, the date it's submitted, that's the code we apply. So in, in that sense, we've already, as a city, as a city council, when the codes were adopted, have made an agreement that development in these areas is allowed if done responsibly and if done according to the criteria.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any else? Well, go ahead and, uh, the general feeling is this should be approved, uh, lies this here I have. Since the staff recommends approval of the application, below is a motion that could be utilized. It says, well, here we go, I move that the planning commission prove SDR three dash twenty-one PLA two twenty-one and SLDP one twenty-one, two twenty-one, three twenty-one for the Oxbow headquarters. Adopt the findings and conditions of approval, the planning commission staff report dated November the third, twenty twenty-two.
Second, that.
Got a second, well, those in favor, say aye.
You're supposed to say any discussion.
With discussion, I'm sorry, any discussion? A little wild, isn't it? Any more comments?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, now we'll call for the vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye. All right, move forward. Motion carries. Shall I get the gravel, okay. Move forward. Now, we'll go over to communications, calendar check. There you go.
Good evening.
Okay, on the twelfth, council workshop session is at six P M. City council at seven P M on the twelfth. On the fifteenth, we have an economic development committee, which is at noon, Parks and Rec at six P M. On the twenty-second, there is no planning commission to break. Hey, all city offices are closed on the twenty-third. And of course, Christmas is, Christmas Eve, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, then all city offices are closed on Monday. And then on, of course, the thirty-first, if New Year's Eve, that takes care of the month of December. I'll wait. Any input or comments on that, Alnder, is there anything we should know that I didn't mention?
Um, for January, or?
There's one event that, it's historical society's holiday. Holiday bizarre. Side from four to eight on Saturday.
On Saturday.
Nice.
We're gonna have vendors inside selling crafts.
What, what date is that, I'm sorry?
That is on December tenth from four to eight.
Yeah.
Four, four P M to eight P M on November tenth.
This Saturday.
So this Saturday, and they'll have a number of vendors there. See, Sealy Mans, Savvy Island Coffee, Taste of Savvy Island, Sass at Home, Berry Studios, et cetera. There's a dozen or so, they'll be set up in their rooms, a craft for sale.
Okay.
So you can see the decorations and something to take.
All right.
All, inside.
Guess I could run over January since we're here. Uh, all city offices will be closed on Monday, first of all, that's important to know. And then the next council work session will be on the third, which is a Tuesday, council meeting on the seventh, at seven. And then there'll be no planning commission meeting on the twelfth. So I guess I'm gonna ask, it says on the twenty, I'll get to that. Martin Luther King Day is on the sixteenth, and that means everything is closed on Monday. And then the council work session will be then again on Tuesday, well, there's a council meeting, which is at seven P M. And then it says the twenty-sixth, the planning commission is at seven P M. Well, of course, the question is, do we have anything on the agenda?
Um, I'm just leaving that as a, as a holding place. The application that might come before you that, that night is for an apartment complex that is off Highway thirty on the old McKesh property where the Berry Stand usually sets up. It's a long, narrow lot that goes due west. And so it's, that application's been in a little bit of a holding pattern. And so I haven't heard from them lately, I'll be checking back with them. But basically, that would be the one that potentially would go that night.
And on the Tuesday the thirty-first, there's the fifty-year SAC meeting at this advisory.
Uh, that's the stakeholder advisory committee for the fifty-year plan, mm-hmm.
Okay, so that takes care of the month and dates. Here. Was here. Hey, is there any comments by the commissioners? Okay, just thank you for your good work as usual. With that.
Yeah.
Is there any comments by staff they wish to make?
I'm just gonna very briefly touch on a few things and then maybe we'll do kind of a more robust, uh, staff comments in the January meeting, because we've had a long week. Well, exciting news, we did get the construction documents already for Healthy Smiles Dental Office, which you all approved not too long ago, so they turned that around pretty quick. So that's under review, so that is great. Um, and then just briefly, just a few little things, we have a pre-app meeting we'll be scheduling soon in relation to the old Sears building next to Fred Meyer. Uh, it's proposed to be reopened as a gym and yoga studio after planning commission grants approval for that change in use. Um, and then we did receive, I may have already mentioned, we received an inquiry meeting application for a potential storage building just, um, at the north, northern terminus of the street where our office is on northeast first street, uh, associated with the J C Mechanical Shop. So those are just, just briefly, a few things we have going on, Chris, I don't know if you wanted to share anything?
Yeah, sure, I'll, I'll give you a quick rundown. The East Airport project, that's off of its way there. Miles of new road, all utilities. Finishing up the landscaping and signage soon, so that that'll be a project. We'll be ready to sign the plat for phase three of that. Stone, the next phase of that project is on Moore Road. It's a waterline, other elements of that street improvement that will happen in the future, but for now, they want to just get the waterline in. So we have the final to that. Started. Maple Street Aplex has occupancy now, it's right there in school. Uh, we nearly have everything we need to sign off on all of those improvements, but they have their occupancy permit for now, I believe. Working on the Kale Street subdivision plans, waiting on those to come back, so that's getting close. Waiting on plans for the food cart pods, it's getting close. We said Healthy Smiles is submitted some stuff to review. We are working with that project to try to, um, some other improvements that would connect, but related to the substation sidewalk improvement. So that's the property across from the little mini mart.
Right.
We're trying to, some curb gutter sidewalk stuff there and, and possibly that would go, we'd extend those improvements past Century Link Building and the other shop. Turning up, challenge anticipated, so happens there. The candlelight apartments. The candlelight apartments, I'm sure you've noticed that, um, building closest to the highway is occupied. It's, it's now occupied or there's, all of the units are rented.
Great.
On the other side, um, I think they're trying to wrap it up. News. Also working on a charging station project, which is just down, uh, past the library on Duckin Street. So that'll be happening as soon as the applicant has a contract on board. Soon as possible.
Yeah.
So there'll be, um, the, it's a Tesla charging station and also a P U D station, they'll be both.
There are four total, two and two, Tesla two.
There's four Teslan.
Right, and Tesla's the ones that are financing part of that?
They'll do their piece in the county and the. It's kind of combined, but.
A joint project.
It's sort of a joint project, that's sort of why it's been. Together. Finally did sort of get all of their stuff on one plan. Yeah, we have a, there's a heritage tree there that we had to work around too, so that's been a little bit of a challenge. But we're there, and I, I just heard recently too that Tesla, uh, will begin to open up their charging.